A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the record show that all three commissioners are present, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Stone. Do we have anyone from the public to be recognized that is not on the agenda?
No, please.
Take a review of the bills.
At this time, I'm going to pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I was saying that.
And properly moved and seconded to pay those that have been properly presented and reviewed. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. We have nothing from the assessor's office this time. We begin with Mario Manos, our 931 appointment with a contract document or discussion concerning Paycom.
Good morning.
Um, yeah, pretty much I just want to see like any final questions on proposal, concerns, I mean, I'll open up to you guys.
Okay, well, um, this is my take on it. So Paycom's a very efficient streamlined system. I think it's the direction our county should go for our payroll system. At the end of the day, it just comes down to funding. At the end of the day, um, we don't approve the contract, Linda does. So it's fully going to be up to Linda if she wants to bring Paycom on. The only issue is funding.
And I, I wanted to mention, obviously, funding I get from you all. But this year is an unusual year. I have, it's, of course, it's not unusual that we're having an election year. But it's a big election and I have some of my seasoned staff when I want to be in my office. And, um, you know, we were, we had some informal discussions with Hunter, I did with Hunter May, about my staff. But, um, you know, I, I realized that, uh, you know, it may, the, the using the system would use, would take the duties of some of my, my staff, some of the duties from one of my staff. But at this time, I'm not willing to give up that right now because I need all hands on deck for the selection. I cannot, I mean, even just new people and changing their duties is just not. I mean, that's something I can do. But until we are in the, into the, into the, what do I say, the roots and bones of the new system, and I'm just not confident that I'm going to take money for my budget. Because another reason is, um, yes, I don't have it in the election budget, but I would have to transfer funds. So I would have, I'm going to have to hire support for Election Day and pre-Election Day for elections.
Would that come out of, I do have a question.
That would be out of election budget, but it's not in the election budget because I never needed it. I mean, we're talking four or five thousand dollars.
How about the new, um, election fund that the state established?
Well, I've just basically thought about that needs to be kind of a bank for.
Equipment, like downfalling.
You know, that's what's my thoughts, what that's for. It's not something I consider.
You would like, you would like the commission to say that we would, you know, upfront all the cost and put that money into your budget. But from fiscal year to fiscal year, it's hard to guarantee anything.
Well, you're right, it is. Um, and, and I, and I'm going to, and I'm saying that I'm willing to work with you, but I can't promise that February or March, I can let that money go because I have, um, May and November, which is another fiscal year. I have, you know, the, but I don't have a budget that has a lot of extra money. I have two computers going down right now and I have to try to work out two computers. So, you know, there's a lot going on and I can't promise to take that, I can't promise I'm willing to give that money out of the payroll budget.
Well, I'll probably put it somewhere else. I think there's a couple different conversations here going on. Um, first of all, with Mario, we are very pleased with the research that we have done on Paycom. We're reaching out to the other counties around us, um, in, in researching the product itself. We are all in on the product, I believe, across the board. Um, and it really does boil down to, to when we want to implement it, where we're going to get the funding to implement it. Because obviously you can't do that at this time. And I believe that it would not be something that if you implemented, that you ask employees. I don't think that was ever the intention or the, uh, because it takes time to learn software and want to, to get into that. And, and so I think we've kind of like jumped a little too quick here. Paycom is definitely a direction the county would like to go and we've got to figure out how to get there. And so, you know, with your election and, and those types of things, um, we will cross that bridge and we will not leave. I mean, the election has to go on. You have to have your staff. So we'll, we'll get that worked out.
You know, that, that was just because when we initially had that conversation, I realized I didn't speak in detail. So I spoke, uh, you know, it's going to take time for me to, to work somebody else into another position. They just, uh, jump over the side of the bridge and know it.
Right.
You know, it's, it's just not that easy.
Well, we're at that time of the year when we're going to be looking at funding. We're working with Sheriff's Department to figure out what's coming in, uh, not the department, but the tax office, to figure all of those types of things out, to see what we have to work with for the next fiscal year. And so, if we continue that and, and go into budget discussions, um, I think it's definitely something that, that we can, can look at. And, and we need to look and dig deep because maybe it is something that we can implement now and then figure out how to.
This was my, my suggestion and I, I think Nate kind of stands with me is me as a commissioner, I would be willing to pay the implementation cost upfront. And I would be willing to cover the monthly cost, which we don't have an exact figure. You know, because it's based off the number of checks. I would be willing to do that until next fiscal year. And then during budget time, it comes up for budgeting in February, March, we need to work together to make this as budget neutral as possible. I'm not saying it's going to be budget neutral, but I think it's something we shouldn't drag our feet on because this is going to free up time in your office for them to do tasks that they need to be doing. And if we keep pushing it down the road, we're never going to get over that implementation hump.
I, I agree. I agree with that.
But I mean, you know, it's, it's the fiscal, the financial part of it. Money is what, you know, kind of, you know, you know, this is not only just going to be helpful to my office, it's going to be helpful to all offices.
It's going to be helpful to our office.
Well, yeah. That's, that's all.
Stuff should also be helpful in terms of election stuff to be able, since we have new people in, to be able to, to help facilitate, um, with, because you, you literally have, you literally have two learning curves going on at the same time. Uh, if I understand you correctly, um, county clerk. And, and in that case, sort of stuff, the most support you can have at that time is probably the best. Is that, is that right?
Well, my current staff and then I'm, I mean, ESNS, which is the programmers, which, you know, when we first got, anytime we changed, you know, watching equipment and programming, you know, we always have, uh, ESNS, which is, um, our support team, one hand. And that was to handle any problems. They can, you know, pinpoint any, anything. And so the worst thing you want is election night for things not to be okay.
Can you usually bring on extra help during elections?
Well, they help at the election center.
Okay.
And I believe a year ago, uh, a year or two ago, two, two years ago, we had, um, we had a volunteer from WVU for a class. She had covered so many hours. So she was an extra person that was there. So she wasn't hired, but she was on the schedule and she did election duties, which was part of her class, of course, that she had to take, WVU. So, um.
I understand why.
Every election is kind of different.
I understand why you're hesitant that if it was me personally, I would not hold off on this. Because we're going, eventually all counties in West Virginia are gone at, um, transitioned to a system like this. And I think it's better. I'm one of them people that just likes to get stuff done. And I think, um, implementation is better sooner than later. But at the end of the day, Linda, this is your decision. I understand you're hesitant because of funding, but I'm just gonna.
Okay, but at the end of the day, who funds my office? Now, I'm not saying, I'm not working. I will work with you, but to do it this February, this fiscal year, I cannot do that.
I could, I mean, I know you want to guarantee, but the commission, I could, I could be gone. I could resign tomorrow. And, you know, any kind of guarantee for next fiscal year would be gone, you know? I can't.
Well, and I do want to share with you, when you were talking about contracts and signing, anything that I've ever had, our current bookkeeping system, um, the commission's one on the level now. I'm not, I know, but I'm not, I'm just saying, but.
If this is your decision, we can't bring Paycom in without your approval.
Oh, well, okay. I get, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But, um, I mean, I, I totally approve of it because it's going to help everyone. It's a learning curve for every department. It's, I mean, that's forward to, um, you know.
Well, and here's what Hunter's getting at. You have to, you have to agree to use this system because we can't force it down anyway.
So I, I get that.
Because, I mean, that's also, it's also your decision. Yes, the commission has to fund through and through no matter what. And like, so we can't guarantee next year, but I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with Hunter. I think, we can't guarantee, I can guarantee tomorrow.
I agree.
But I think it's imperative that we do get this started and get the ball rolling on this. We have to somehow find the money out of contingencies or whatever to get this going.
What we, what me and Nate looked at, the, um.
That, that was going to be my point.
The implementation fee would come out of two or three and then, um, the additional monthly cost.
Contracted services or?
Contracted services. Contracted services.
And then additional monthly costs would come out of contingencies.
Yeah, okay.
We can't do that.
Then.
That, you know, that's up to you all, how to handle this fiscal year. And I'm telling you, I will work with your budget time, but I cannot.
And that's what we, and that's, and that's what I think we want you to do at budget time. Find, figure out so that way we have it in your budget under contracted services. That way we know what we have to allocate. That way it comes out of your budget moving forward. But that's where we need to help when it comes to that time.
And the problem, and, and we, when we had our discussion, when I had discussion with Nate and Hunter, you know, we didn't get into the little details and stuff, you know, you know. You understand why I kind of flip my lid, but I do that occasionally.
You're straight shooter.
That's how you make a best decision. Um, so going, I'm going to ask you. Do you feel like it's best that we roll with this now?
I, I, I am of that opinion. I mean, it, I am the one that doesn't, I don't have a track. As long as it doesn't just prolong the agony, I guess that's what I said. Just get it, that way you can get a move forward.
Yeah, every county I talk to, I call it every county in West Virginia that's currently using Paycom and they have nothing, nothing bad to say about Paycom. Everything great. So if we want to do it, okay, um, how should we proceed, Nate?
Does it need to be moved to put onto an agenda? Is the way the contract put on, the contract?
No, we have to return.
Here to sign?
Literally, I mean, the signature, the promissory signature page and go, Linda, sort of stuff. The big question would be about funding, sort of stuff, so if.
And you, and you're saying it's in one of three, correct?
We have it.
We have it.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty thirty.
Twenty K is the.
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm looking at.
That's what I'm looking at.
Looking at the email you guys sent.
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Said the implementation cost would be four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Which is, which is, just for the record, which would be less than half of what it would be if it were me.
I, yeah, I wanted to say to this check that is very strategic, the implementation team, because of the election season, is going to be with Linda throughout the whole election season. And that implementation is very reduced right now because of the tax benefits taking over tax law, I believe, now, in so.
So that would come out of contracted services and then the additional estimated, man, I don't have my contacts and can't read. The additional monthly cost would come out of contingencies. So would we.
One thousand two hundred and five dollars.
It would be roughly twelve hundred.
Yeah.
For each, for each check, sort of stuff.
Yeah.
And that's, that's very good, depending on employees.
Right, exactly. One thousand two hundred and four.
Budget revision out of contingencies, you know, of contracted services.
So do we need, do we need a motion for this? Or do we just have a.
We just need, well, we have to, we have to have a motion to sign the contract.
Well, we don't, we don't sign the contract, do we?
With, granted, this is, this could be different, but with other counties that we've done, the county clerks have signed the proposal, committed the change, the master service agreement.
The contract comes to us. They do the proposal.
Yeah.
We sign the, like, everything with smile.
Yeah, they, they sign everything.
They sign everything, yeah. Oh, okay.
So they would just.
So, you know, I'm signing, so we just need a, a motion for the.
To fund this year.
Yeah, all we need is an implementation fee paid.
Okay.
And then the proposal, committed the change, the master service agreement signed, and that would all be done.
Okay, um, at this time, I made that the county commission pays for, um, the initial investment cost of four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents out of contracted services. And then the estimated additional monthly cost until next fiscal year in the amount which is estimated, uh, twelve hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents out of contingencies.
I will say that.
And properly moved and seconded that the county commission agreed to pay the initial setup cost, uh, for the Paycom in the amount of four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents out of contracted services and the additional, uh, monthly, uh, fee, uh, one thousand two hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents. That's bi-monthly, correct? It's twice a month?
Yes, semi-monthly.
Yep. Um, out of contingencies that remain after this fiscal year, um, to, to get this started. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Also, I'm so excited to work with you guys. Thank you guys so much. Thank you for your business. Congratulations.
And I, I apologize for my excitedness when we talked about budgets, but you know.
It's okay. You're very, you're very passionate, yeah. You care about your employees, so you want to do the.
Who doesn't love payroll?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Thanks.
Mario, have a great day.
Thanks.
All right, we will move along. We're late. Melissa, our nine thirty-five appointment. Melissa Hardy, our chief activity. Um, she has three second accounts that, uh, I still have to.
These are the ones that Nate brought to your attention last week. Um, the county guard protection, the salary fund enhancements, and the opioid settlement. Um, I've set those up. Those are three signature, um, accounts for, so they have the U F to sign.
Yes.
There you go.
Right there on all three.
And they're all ready, clear, Hunter, Ben?
Everyone, when I do your.
If I'm here, um, yeah, since I'm here, that's what it is. If I'm here, I'm here.
Well, hopefully you're, you're.
Yes.
He needs to go and sign this.
And you guys get what this is, correct?
Yeah.
I did talk to, just kind of aside, I did talk to Hunt Mullins. He said that he should be getting the checks for all the different entities for the opioid settlement this, during the next couple of weeks. It should be by the end of the month. He said no later than that.
That's great.
What he's been told, I saw him, what name was it? Saturday, sorry.
I spent a, I spent a much longer project than my tenure. Tom, is that started before you?
No, it, well, the lawsuits started while I've been in commission, I mean, the epidemic.
I do have one check to put in for the fire protection. Give the money for that.
Fifty.
Fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So we're need to figure out where you have.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, cheers, Chris.
Thank you for bringing that deputy down there. I haven't got it. There's two.
That's just an employee hire request. Edwancy Harper is a utility officer to work as a available in the courthouse. His starting salary would be fourteen dollars an hour and he will start today.
Any questions, Alex?
At this time, I make a motion to approve the hiring of Mr. Harper as utility officer starting today for fourteen bucks.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded to approve the hire of Edwancy Harper as a utility officer of the sheriff, uh, sheriff's office starting today, December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at a pay rate of fourteen dollars per hour for his three month probationary period. His salary based off that same hourly rate. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, we'll move along. About three quarters of our minutes.
And at this time, I'm moved to approve the minutes for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I will say.
And properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Senator.
At this time, I made to approve the settlement list for November second, twenty twenty-two through November second, twenty twenty-three. I think that, that should be twenty twenty-three.
Clerk.
Yeah, that's fine. So November second, twenty twenty-three for Delaney.
I'll say.
And properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list for November second, two thousand twenty-three through November second, two thousand twenty-three for Delaney. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Keyabees?
At this time, I would make a motion to dispense with the reading. The proceedings of vacation and assessment of record for November twenty-third, third, and twenty-first.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the proceedings of vacation and enter them into record in open court session for November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three through November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Nothing under the fiduciary commissioner report, old business, new business, nothing under OEM central garage, for instance, to our county administrators' report.
Good morning, Nate.
Good morning. Happy December to all. And just to make this December to remember, here at the county commission, we are once again announcing that our regular session meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-sixth is canceled. There will be no meeting that week of Christmas and we hope all of you are able to enjoy the season with family and loved ones alike. Secondly, after a lengthy and thorough review process as illustrated in the email and diagram before you, the Supreme Court has approved our courthouse reconfiguration plan pursuant to the highlighted changes mentioned in the email from Ms. Pat Moats, which I can confirm have already been incorporated by the Mills Group into their finer all potential design. I have also made sure to share the email packet before you with all the relevant parties in the courthouse so that everyone is up to speed on this reconfiguration. At this time then, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve and accept all modifications to the previously approved courthouse reconfiguration plan as outlined by the Supreme Court in the email before you.
Okay, at this time, I'm made to approve the changes made by the West Virginia Supreme Court to our already approved reconfiguration plans for the second floor of the courthouse to accommodate a second judge.
I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, accept the changes, um, that have been approved by the Supreme Court on the second floor reconfiguration that's already been approved by the commission. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Yes.
Speaking of the courthouse reconfiguration, that takes us to our WVCFIA twenty-first century, uh, excuse me, twenty-first cycle funding documents. As reported recently, we were awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant for our courthouse reconfiguration project. And what you have had sent to you in your packet last week are the documents for this grant funding. That being said, we have one minor adjustment that the WVCFIA and I had to correct in the original contract. For as much as we love our friends from Mason County, we aren't really wanting to share our grant funds with them. So that has been corrected and is adjusted in the packets before you, uh, now. Um, included in your packets are two items. The first, and this is for the president, the first is the contract itself, which all of you have. And the second is the receipt checkoff sheet that is only present to the president, but you all have in your electronic packet before you. While both documents are identical in content from previous years, it is important to note that two signature pages of the contract must be signed by the president of the commission and two recipient checklist forms must also be signed and initialed by the president. For those of us who are new to this whole process, excerpting and highlighting from the checklist itself is a great way to introduce us to the process. The timeline for the grant is from January first through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four with a potential for extension. Uh, once the project is complete, a project completion report will be due to the WVCFIA and will be produced by none other than yours truly. WVCFIA projects must also be publicly bid in the newspaper to obtain a minimum of three bids and must be reviewed by SHIPA, the State Historical Preservation Office. Quarterly reports are also due, again, produced by yours truly. And we will also, uh, are allowed to make three reimbursement requests during the life of this grant with each grant requiring a twenty percent match of the total by the county to reflect the eighty-twenty split between the CFI and the county as required by the authority. And with all that then said, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to accept the grant funding documents in tota, authorizing the president to sign both two copies of the contract agreement itself as well as initial and sign two copies of the funding receipt checkoff list so that I may return those to the CFI to get this courthouse reconfiguration started.
Okay, at this time, I'm made to approve the funding assistance contract agreement between the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority and the Preston County Commission and the recipient checklist and authorize, um, the president of the county commission to sign two documents for each.
I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, approve and authorize the president to sign and initial the contract and also the checkoff list, um, agreement, um, for the courthouse facilities improvement.
Correct.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Once again, Nate, thank you for, um, going after this one.
Oh, my pleasure.
Helps a lot with the.
We've gotten this grant struggle many years.
You've gotten it for many years.
Yeah, we have, we do have.
I'm glad I did not fumble, fumble on the goal line for my.
I don't think many other counties apply for the grant, which they should.
We don't want to really encourage that at this stage.
We don't want to continually.
Certain, certain politicians are going to do a lot of things, but not in this area.
You have to look at this and answer a lot of it. A lot of, some, some of these counties don't need that much of this money. They just, they want to be able to do it without. They don't want to go to the trouble of filling out a paperwork and jump through the hoops. They just want to, they have the money, they're just going to write the check.
Well, even if I was in a county with a larger.
I agree with you.
I'd still want to be, um, respectfully responsible.
But that is not how other people think.
I know.
If someone is going to give me a check.
Hey, thank you for your work, Lee.
A lot of larger counties play for money like the federal government.
Thank you guys. I gotta round.
I'll get it.
Congratulations, Judge.
And finally, we turn our attention to the sheriff's office. Things are progressing along. The third floor is in its final cleaning for the evidence, um, movement, sort of stuff. Kevin got all that squared away. Uh, we, we had custodians on site a little bit early today to make sure everything was ready and could go. The flooring is now on site and we're working on a timeline for that. It requires a seventy-two hour acclamation period, so it will be moved at that time. Current page is just downstairs. Uh, we will get timeline on that shortage. Panhandle is currently in the basement, working on trim, cleaning and preparing for epoxy. Just recently, Kevin texted me and said, the. Just recently, Kevin texted me and said, the painting team is en route now to be able to begin the first level cleaning and preparing for the epoxy, which is their penultimate sort of task. The only thing we are really waiting on now is as follows. From Panhandle's side of the street, um, the finishing of the plaster and the painting, which we will get a timeline on later today. The second thing is the stairs, the tread sort of completion. Uh, we will get a timeline on that, if not today, by the end of this week. The final sort of item we have is a timeline for the electrical. This is outside of Panhandle's purview, but that is what we are waiting. We have been promised this, but Kevin and I are still working on trying to get this update from our friends at Edison and are expecting something by no later than the end of the week, or we will have some terms exchanges. Um, and since there is no additional budget revisions or miscellaneous correspondence, thus concludes the reading and hearing of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. I'm glad the sheriff's office project is finally moving along.
Yep.
While they're trying to hit their, um, completion date, setting the contract.
That's good, good.
And Kevin's been a great, great help.
All right, um, we'll move along to, uh, Commissioner's comments. Don?
How about, so always authority meeting tomorrow evening. And then also a win on Thursday, I have a meeting with, uh, Region Six, whoever it will be, whoever, uh, at the economic development plan at teleconference with that last night, just to review some of the committees. And it's, it's got some really interesting information on there about different things. Move that word, because it has all the different projects that are out there. I mean, there's like, almost six, there are almost seven projects that Region Six is working on, whether it be water or sewer or whatever, so I mean, there's a lot. I'll get you guys confidence of that. On another day, there was winter weather, uh, for everybody. Most of the snow that's supposed to hit is gonna be between noon, noon tomorrow and three P.M. That's what it's supposed to hit present time. And it's gonna be estimated an inch, possibly more, but that's unless you're, you know, in a higher elevation, it's supposed to be up to three inches, three to five inches, so. But just everybody be careful tomorrow. Um, the other thing, I think, that you have, uh, I will not be able to make it this afternoon to that, uh, thing out of prisons here. Because I'm actually donating blood at the exact same time, so I'll really want to take. I'm not doing that. That's all I got.
I don't have much today. There was a lot of, um, Christmas celebrations that went on in the county over the weekend, quite a few. Um, I wasn't able to attend all of them because I, um, I help, I'm in the Brewston Lions Club, and we do the, um, Brewston Christmas Homecoming, but it went very well, and it was probably our best attended event yet with probably three or four thousand people watching the great portion. So that was great, and now I have some extra free time because my mother is in charge of the, um, whole thing, and she, you know how that goes. Anything mama says, I do. So I'm glad to be done with that. Um, as, um, Don said, FCC Hazleton, which is a federal correction complex in Hazleton, my neighbor in the woods, I've been preached in there having a community, what is it, relation board meeting or, um, a dinner, like a Christmas dinner kind of thing. I'm gonna try to attend that.
I'm kind of disappointed. See, for you, it doesn't matter, but they're actually going to highlight the barista program right now.
Hey, I'm, hey, if they make me ice coffee, I'll be more than happy.
They might need that.
Yeah, a lot of people don't know, they have barbershops, they have a new barista program, they have, um, stores that they each run. Um, in our studio. There's a lot of things that goes on up there that people don't know about. They actually have a factory in the medium security prison that builds, um, parts for the federal government for, uh, military vehicles. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, been busy, uh, working on, uh, looking at, uh, now that we have the, the plan with the Mills Group that allows, uh, some funding opportunities, um, that we've just got to dig in deep to try to look to see if we can come up with any federal money, um, to help with the project for the, for the health department. Um, it's still very premature, um, but that just requires a lot of work and a lot of resources, a lot of, uh, working with much higher.
Well, neat, well, neat buildings are great, but my worries are the, um, additional staff, the county commission they have to have to, um, maintain a facility like that.
Right, right, right. So anyway, just, uh, looking on, working on a, a lot of little things like that. Um, and this week, it seems like it's the calm. I do have a meeting in Terada tomorrow morning um, with, um, the town up there and, uh, the state. And then this week is calm, and then next week slammed before Christmas, so just, uh.
Next week's the catch-all.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So, um, at this time, I don't have anything else. Does anyone, anything?
I have a question. Other than the hundred thousand dollars, was there any other grants for funding for the courthouse?
No, no, no.
That was it, just the hundred thousand?
Yeah.
It looks like it's going to be very expensive.
Uh, yeah.
Probably, well.
We have to, once we, um, once, well, now that we have this done, we can bid the project out, so we don't know exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That the Mills Group is estimating.
I'm estimating five hundred and some thousand dollars total.
They're estimating five hundred and some?
Roughly five hundred plus.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we're gonna try to shoot for, for lower.
Yeah, yeah.
You never know until you did.
That's just a very rough.
We have to bring the quality of bidders in, and it all depends on who the lowest bidder is, so.
No, I was just wondering if there are any other grants that I missed?
No.
No, that, the, this courthouse grant, this is one they, they, they have a certain amount of, a certain pool of money each year, and they know you award so much, obviously, because you have so much.
The maximum we could qualify for is a hundred thousand.
Yeah, mostly we qualify.
So it's something that you can get yearly?
Yes, and we, I, I can't even tell you how.
Probably five, six years.
Uh, number. We act when, secure, when we have data security with the, uh, metal detectors and everything at the courthouse, that was, we got a grant for that. We've gotten grants in the past for our work with elevators and things like that because ADA accessibility, like when we redid the courtroom itself, because ADA accessibility for getting in the jury and the, up, and I think the drew box, that was, or, or that was started by that grant. So there have been multiple things through the years.
The latest one was the repointing and sealing of the courthouse, which happened less than a year ago. And then the Chiller project was last year's project, and we're still waiting for the equipment to come in to do that.
It's on its timeline, though.
But no, but no additional funding from the Supreme Court or the state for, um, the second judge.
There was some talk that, I talked to, um, delegate Street about the possibility of the state trying to, you know, seeing how they could offset some of the costs because of the increase. You know, it was like, look, you're, you know, it's great we're getting another judge, but at the same time, you're not. You're, you're, we have to facilitate, you know, we have to have a facility to house the person and their staff, but we don't have it. And, but we gotta pay the bill for it, so. And, but nothing really came out of it, I think it kind of just, I mean, not, not because of him, he, he tried to get it.
Well, our delegates and senators truly tried, but when you have, um, fifty other counties that aren't dealing with the same issue.
Right.
They could care less.
Yeah.
If you think about it.
Okay.
Do we have anything else?
No, I just want to make sure I didn't miss a grant or something.
No, you didn't.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
We thought, like I said, it looked like, looking at the map, it looked like it was very expensive.
It's so weird not being able to see anywhere. I have to pick my contacts. It's so weird trying to talk because like, I can't see.
Hey, guys, is it possible that we get the information to be able to plug it into our, um, so that.
I came in and see bases, so the whole town, I'm talking to.
With those issues that are PSDs and there's issues with water, so things like that, they, they typically shoot out a system through wins.
I did hear a little bit, but I couldn't.
I know the case, which is a county-based system.
I couldn't read it either, but.
So.
Yeah.
But you have to subscribe to the win in order to get the notification. It's gonna be like a message to go out.
You guys have a good afternoon.
You can, you can send a light.
So two, two copies.
Also, it's like an informational.
Yeah, you can send a light, make up, and let it show that, um, part of that, like, right, you can send it.
And then get one of this, right?
I would say, what you said for me.
Like a public notice.
I'd say, yeah, and we'd probably just do a press release on it.
Yeah.
We did that in the past when we first implemented it, but I think it's, people aren't familiar with it still.
Yeah.
And, and, and short of going door to door telling hand people, saying, you're signing for it, email, what do you think?
Are you talking about wins?
Yeah.
I mean, I did it when, yeah, me and my wife did when, when they first implemented it several years ago.
Yeah, we printed the, the, when the Olympic was going to be.
It was in the paper, yeah. It was a big thing in the paper.
Yeah, me, I'm, you guys have something like that, just email you.
Two minutes, yeah, they're there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You all have my email?
Yes, I want to have Nate to send you that information.
Okay, thank you very much.
And don't send it to her, um, Dominion Post email.
No, don't send it to the Dominion Post email because it never gets forwarded, and I never, I never get it because I always use, I, but in fact, I don't have it on my phone. That one.
We don't need a resolution.
No, I said, like, if you decide to, we just, we don't, so we have to make, make sure that.
I sent it to your email, Jonathan, but you don't ever write back to me.
I have to start doing that because I always send it.
You should start doing that, I agree.
No, I just send, I just send like to Don for the meetings when he sends me a, something.
Oh, right.
I send a thank you, so he knows I got it.
Gotcha.
I'll do the same for you.
There you go, there you go.
I'll just send a thank you. But mine, don't send it to the Dominion Post.
No, I just sent it to the.
Arathis?
Or whatever.
Arathis?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, because it comes up with your name and that on it, and I just hit send.
I will just send you a thank you, so you know I got it.
Perfect, perfect, or receipt or something like that, either way.
No, I just, but thank you and.
That, that works.
I do that to the other, everybody that sends me an agenda, I do that to.
One more person.